If everybody would please rise. Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cared? Announcements, November sixteenth, Facilities Committee meeting, seven o'clock, right here, seven o'clock in the morning. December first, Finance Committee meeting at seven thirty a.m., doing that via Zoom. And December fifth is our next regular board meeting at seven o'clock, right in this room also. And we'll have a Tuesday taptation during that night. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to the board tonight? Everybody wants, alright. Let's move on to the Treasurer's Report.
Yes, we begin with Brian, I'm gonna give for September and October. We begin with Brian Garson with Hilltop contribution of one thousand dollars and an anonymous contribution to Hilltop for one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Josie Josephson, Ellie Hart Book Fair Memorial, one hundred and seventy dollars. GMS BTO Brandew, four thousand fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Charities Aid Foundation, MWHS, forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Anonymous Community Ed Group Football, ten dollars. Lifestyle Communities, West Tonka Community Theater, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Class of nineteen sixty-two, Mary Cole Scholarship, World College Scholarship, ten hundred and five dollars. Butch Humbert Larry Excel Scholarship, one hundred dollars. Northwest Tonka Lions, Northwest Tonka Lions Scholarship, six thousand dollars. Daniel Surth Harquet's Dance Team, one hundred and fifty dollars. David and Michelle Schistler Harquet's Dance Team, three hundred and two dollars. Day Rentals Harquet's Dance Team, fifty dollars. The Cave Minnesota Harquet's Dance Team, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bound True Value Harquet's Dance Team, fifty dollars. West Lakes Dynasty Harquet's Dance Team, two hundred and fifty dollars. Fairway Mortgage Harquet's Dance Team, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Jennifer and Jamie Bellardi Harquet's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. Prairie Landscaping Harquet's Dance Team, one hundred and one dollars. Babur Kadaver Environmental Services, yes again, Harquet's Dance Team, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. CJ Aluminum Castings Harquet's Dance Team, three hundred and two dollars. Crown Auto Motor Bell LLC Harquet's Dance Team, fifteen hundred dollars. Back Channel Brewery Harquet's Dance Team, one hundred and one dollars. Magic Taylor and Cleaners Harquet's Dance Team, fifty dollars. Kato Auto Lounge Salon Harquet's Dance Team, seventy-five dollars. Boys Lacrosse Club, two thousand twenty-two Boys Lacrosse Season, five thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents. Girls Basketball Club, Dr. Dish Training Equipment, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Girls Swim Club, Custom Swim Caps, one hundred and twenty dollars. Butch Humbert Larry Excel Scholarship, one hundred dollars. Marty Fisher West Tonka Administrative Services, forty-five dollars. Number One Z LLC, West Tonka Wings, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Charities Aid Foundation, MWHS, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. And for Firm One, West Tonka Wellness, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-four cents. And Northwest Tonka Lions, West Tonka Youth Baseball League, Waterfield Improvements, six thousand dollars. Near debate contributions, cash, thirty-nine thousand four hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents. We also have a non-cash donation from all and all us. Staff recognition gift cards for six hundred and sixteen dollars. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've reviewed the check pledges for October and September, and all seems to be in order.
Thank you, Ralph. We'll move on to the student representative.
Hi, so just to start, I would like to apologize for my voice sort of lack thereof. I overworked it a little bit during the musical this weekend, so my apologies if I'm a little difficult to understand. Ah, so I'll just get right into it. Students' Senate celebrated be the change week in mid-October, and students participated in student shout-outs, sending positive messages to friends, compliment cards, and positive post-it notes. To end the week, the high school students also signed pledges and observed a silent passing period between classes to stand against bullying. Today marks the kickoff to staff appreciation week. At the high school, students will be encouraged to take selfies and make TikToks with staff members, as well as sharing staff shout-outs. Staff members will receive personalized gifts and breakfast on Friday morning. In the realm of the arts, Mad Jaws had their first performance in October and are preparing to begin holiday caroling at Fletcher's and throughout the community next month. The cast of Oliver celebrated a very successful opening night this Friday and were able to follow it with a tremendous performance Saturday despite one of the leads falling ill. Theresa Bray and Gracie Specht stepped into new roles with just five hours to learn new blocking lines and choreography. More performances follow Friday and Saturday at seven and Sunday at two. In athletics, the girls soccer team finished their season on a positive point. They earned fourth place in the new section and also scored a win against De La Salle. One of their players scored eighteen goals and the team graduated thirteen seniors. Assistant varsity coach Adrian Francisco will be taking over the varsity program next year. Girls swim and dive had four talent team, grade seven through twelfth. They are currently ranked fourth in the state for the A division and have broken four school records, as well as going to state, placing second and twelfth. Ah, the girls varsity tennis team finished their season by earning second place in the Wright County Conference and were led by captains Sarah Fungenberg, Ellen Pruitt, Kate V. Lander, and Sydney Leonard. The varsity volleyball team finished the season fourteen to thirteen, which is the program record since two thousand and twelve. Both boys and girls cross-country teams achieved gold status in the classroom with an average GPA of three point nine. The boys team has a winning percentage of point seven five and the girls team won at an amazing rate of point nine three seven. They graduate three seniors and return everyone else for the next season. The boys soccer team finished their season very successfully with fifty-six participants in three levels. Along with winning the Wright County Conference title, they also ranked number five in state double-A ranking, as well as having four WCC all-conference winners and one all-state first-team winner, Dylan Mather. All high school football levels finished their seasons very strong. C-Squad was eight for zero, JV was six to two, and varsity went eight to one. They also had the highest number of participants in Coach David's ten seasons with over one hundred and fifty players. The varsity team also clinched the Twin Cities Maroon Sub-District Championship for the second year in a row and their fifth sub-district championship in the last eight years. And that is all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any school board committee?
I was just gonna congratulate her. I went to Oliver on Saturday, our whole family did. It was unbelievable. And to think that those two kids jumped in with barely any notice, I mean, it was phenomenal. And my mom couldn't stop. She's texting us the next morning going, "I just can't believe it. I am just so proud," just on and on. That was her first time, believe it or not, in the theater at a performance. And she just, yeah, she couldn't say enough. So it was phenomenal, and I should have quickly alerted that out before she left, but it was, it was great.
Yeah, Lori went with Molly and took her grandkids.
Yeah.
She said they were just sitting there.
Totally, yeah.
It was just, it was kind of.
One thing that was unique is they combined their middle school with their high school, which was really fun. For the cast of Oliver, it worked really well.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Were there any school committee reports, anybody? Okay, then we'll move on to the focus report. And Scott, floor is yours.
Ah, thank you.
So as Scott walks up, I would just, by way of introduction, this past summer, Joel Dahl, who had been a community recreational coordinator here and then our director for, boy, he must have been here for about ten years. He took a different position closer to his home, and then we interviewed for this position, and we're really pleased to, that Scott applied for this position and that he's really had an incredible start here over the past, past few months. And so, wanted to get him before the board so he could give a little background of himself and how the start has gotten for him. And then we're doing a few action items, and I thought he could just explain a little bit what we're doing for those as well. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you very much for letting me come tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Scott Lapka, and I am the new Community Ed Director. Previous to my role in Community Ed, I had spent the last ten years or so at Shirley Hills. And I think I know most of you here as the Positive Behavior Interventional Support Specialist, and then previous to that as the Library Media Specialist. Previous to West Tonka, I had also taught in New Prague in the elementary level, and I've spent the last eighteen years in education. I also have been involved in community education and aquatics programming for over the last twenty-five plus years also. Previous to being the aquatics coordinator for West Tonka for the last year with Joel, I was with the School District of Minnetoka for sixteen years as their lifeguard and aquatics coordinator there. So I come with a large background in programming as well as education. The beginning of the year has started off very, very well. We are seeing that families do want to come back and be participating in activities post-COVID. Yay, we love seeing that. We are seeing record numbers of people signing up and participating, not only in our rec and sports activities, but also in our arts and in our early learning setting and adventure club. Everything is going really, really well. Our numbers are looking great, and we are expecting a very good profit at the end of the year. So, that's good. Just a little bit about some of the action items that Kevin had mentioned. There are three action items that are coming before you. You'll see on the agenda that Lindsay Ragoo is, has resigned from her position as our Activity Center Manager. And we have done some interviewing and would like to officially hire Gary Piaski. But along with that, we would also like to do an additional position of Program Support Specialist to help support Gary in this role. And a little bit about background behind this, pre-COVID, we, as a district, eliminated a position for our Recreation and Athletics Coordinator. And moved this position into a stipend position that was split between Lindsay and, at the time, our Aquatics Coordinator, Tracy Rude. When Tracy left due to some medical things going on in her family, Lindsay took on the full role of this and took on the full stipend. And as Lindsay now transitions out and we bring a new person in, I think it's a great time to really look at splitting that position back up. But Kevin and I talked a little bit about it, and we don't know that, we want to bring it in as a Program Support Specialist, which is a kind of a variation that we've taken in Community Ed the last couple of years with our adventure club and then our early learning. As a person who isn't a fully coordinator, but is there to help support in a variety of different ways as a program assistant and support specialist. So we are now looking to add this position back as programs are continuing to grow, as I mentioned. We are gonna keep the lead manager position in that this Program Support Specialist would assist the rec program support and with that rec supervision, as well as providing some assistance at the West Tonka Activity Center as another face to be able to help support some of the members there. The rec, as I mentioned, the rec coordinator manager would be the lead in these programs, and this person, the support specialist would assist in the coordination and implementation of these programs, creating more activity and capacity and access to public and staff. So that is the first. The other action items that we are looking at doing, we had a early learning center, adventure club, preschool, site supervisor, Levis, Kelly Hildar. And this position has set vacant for the last several weeks, and we haven't had a ton of applicants looking for, in this position. And so, we are looking to combine or eliminate this position, and in doing so, we are going to also look to add additional responsibilities to our second position at our early learning center. So currently, the current setup is that our early learning center has two program site supervisors, one for each classroom, and then an assistant in each classroom. And we have the same setup at Shirley Hills, but it's just one classroom. So what we are proposing to do is eliminate one of the site supervisor, early learning center positions that is currently vacant, and then add additional responsibility onto the person in that position that is already there, and then provide additional compensation for that person. This person then would have the ability to oversee both classrooms, provide better communication to both classroom families, making it more consistent, as well as plan the curriculum and activity for both classrooms, making it more consistent all around.
Would there be like a lead teacher in each classroom under this supervisor then?
So this supervisor would kind of be the lead teacher over both classrooms, and then the assistant supervisors are also in both classrooms to help with the implementation. And again, at Shirley Hills, this is the way it is set up. There is a lead teacher and a site supervisor, and they work hand in hand to present the curriculum and different things like that throughout the day. At the early learning center, we're proposing that there's been one person who plans and oversees the curriculum and then works with the assistant supervisors to implement that. In doing this, because we'd be eliminating a position, there would be a cost savings to Community Ed for this. Roughly, when we're looking at the wage that our previous person had with benefits, and then what we're proposing to increase to the second position, to increase their wages, we'd be looking at a cost savings of about thirty-eight thousand dollars for community education. So, those are just a little bit of background into the three proposals that I have before you. Are there any questions?
And I'm sure you've looked at this, so you don't think there's any problem as far as time constraint or the ability to consolidate these two positions?
Um, I don't. So I, that was one of the things that I really challenged my adventure club team, Michelle Chaney and Lindsay Hens, and be just to make sure, are we feeling that we could ensure that the capacity is there, the quality is there, the safety and security is there if we went to this? And we all feel like we can. What happened was originally there was just one site supervisor in each classroom, and probably about three years ago or so, we decided as Community Ed to add a assistant supervisor to each classroom. And it, it works out great. The extra support is there. But I do feel at this point that we, if we have just one person overseeing the implementation, the planning, and then utilizing those assistant supervisors a little bit more effectively, that we can do the same thing.
One thing to separate, so what he's talking about is our childcare program, adventure club. He's not talking about preschool.
Yeah.
Preschool has the lead teacher, and that's the piece that goes with our standards.
Thank you, yeah.
This is, one, one thing that I'm really proud of our childcare program is, it really complements the preschool program. So when you go in, you're still learning. There's, there's great benefit in being in that, which in talking to Scott with these assistants, we feel like we can uphold that.
Scott, one question for you. On the rec and Activity Center Support Specialist, is that a direct report to you, to Gary, or to, how is that person? I mean, you want somebody to take responsibility for it, not just be, you know, do stuff that other people don't wanna do.
Yes. So, that, that's a two-fold approach. The person will report to Gary in the sense that we'll work closely with them, we'll take the general direction, and we'll oversee. But Gary and I will officially oversee and do evaluations where I will officially sign off as the director of that. Other questions?
Yeah, I'm excited about Gary. I think that it will be a great fit. Will he be at, housed kind of at the Activity Center?
Uh huh.
Okay, so he'll be in Lindsay's office and then?
Yep.
We'll coordinate that. Okay.
Correct. And if we do end up adding the Support Specialist position, I already talked with Gary, and Gary would like this person to also house out of that same office. We just reconfigure it a little bit more, so then this person would also be there and can be very connected with the Activity Center community as well.
Okay. And then the savings by eliminating that one, I'm assuming would, would obviously not really be there because it's gonna go to the second person there.
Exactly, yeah. So it's really gonna be, I mean, we'll, we'll end up saving some because of the amount of money. There was about an eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar stipend that Lindsay got. With that, so with that stipend and then some of the cost savings from here, we'd be able to offset that. So.
So Scott, I think the cost savings is great. The one thing I would just sort of say is, if you find that the people are getting overwhelmed or it's too much as part of the change, don't hesitate to, let's make a change then and ensure we add the position back or we find the funds to make sure we don't lose the good people. Because I think we've all seen over time, sometimes we make these decisions and we add more on to current people, and then all of a sudden it becomes overwhelming for those folks. And while I'm all about saving our district dollars, I also don't wanna lose our great staff members, so.
I one hundred percent agree, and thank you. Thank you for that.
Well, so just so I'm clear, so we also save money because it's one less staff member, so that's one less all the other expenses associated.
It is in the sense that we are, we're, we're kind of saving from one program, but then we're adding to another program, so it, it really isn't gonna be a huge savings. We're talking maybe about anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars total.
I would, I would, I would go, at least from my perspective, Scott, the timing of this is at the same time, they wasn't dependent on each other. And so, we are not pulling back on the adventure club because we're putting this other position in. It's just that the timing all happened at the same time. And so, I would, I would say going back to the youth rec and support, we originally, pre-COVID, had two coordinators, one for the Activity Center and one that oversaw rec. When COVID hit, we decided not to fill that position as cost savings, and now our numbers are back, and it really requires that kind of management. I think what's different and what's positive is Scott has this as an assistant versus another full-fledged coordinator, which I really think is gonna work well, because when you look at the programs that happen out of the Activity Center and the connection to youth rec, there's parallels that cross and cross. And then having two people that can support each other on those efforts, I think is gonna be a really positive. When we get to the adventure club piece, I think what we're looking at is, one, they feel that there is a way to provide quality childcare with the staffing model that they put in place. It is that it's one less, and they have a very capable person who's been in the district a long time that's shown some interest in this. We'll post it, we'll interview, but I think we have some good people that are gonna wanna take this. And to Brian's point, nothing's more important than making sure that we have the quality of care that people depend on in our program. And so I think the timing seems that this has all come up at the same time, but they're pretty independent in how the decision was made.
Last quick thing about the Activity Center. I've heard from a couple people or employees that work there that I don't believe and I understand with COVID and everything, but since the day we opened, there has not been any reevaluating of, you know, their earnings, so to speak, no raises, no nothing-giving. So I do hear a lot of frustration in that, and so I'm hoping that.
You're saying in terms of the employees?
Yes, yes, that there's been no evaluations, there's been no team meetings, there's been, it, it just seems so, so I'm hoping that, you know, you're obviously new to that, Gary's new to that. I hope that's something that will, you know, kind of be taken care of, because we need good staff as well and all that.
Yep, that is, that's one of the things that we are, we're gonna be looking at, is how to improve the processes that have already been there and change the ones that need to be reworking. One of the things that we're also looking at is just those wage increases. As we, we know that trying to find quality staff is, is hard, but when we find them, we wanna hold on to them. But we also have to figure out how to, how to raise those wages a little bit. And that might be one thing I've talked with Kevin about is maybe after, or July first, doing an increase of membership. We haven't raised our membership, according to Lindsay, since we've opened, so that might be an option. But again, in talking with Kevin, we also wanna maintain and make sure that we're drawing people in. So if we draw people in by having to lower membership or to be, raise it to try and get more revenue to be able to do that, it's, it's that balance, yeah, trying to do it.
I think that's a great conversation to have with your Community Ed Advisory Group and kind of go through them and then come here. But obviously, one, good review should be happening regardless, and so that, that needs to happen. As far as increases, we're glad that Community Ed is now on its feet again after a couple challenging years and looking forward to some of the steps that you're gonna be able to take with the program.
And kudos for the pickleball tournament. You were jumped right into that thing, like skydive everywhere, like, yeah.
We had a very, very successful pickleball tournament on Saturday.
Yeah, that was great.
Any other final questions?
Thank you for being here tonight, Scott.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Mark? Teaching and Learning Report, please.
Good to see everybody again. I have three updates for you tonight. As you know, we have this really great partnership with the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. We call it CARRY Center at the University of Minnesota, and they worked with us last year on a year-long study just on, what are we doing well with supporting our students, where do we shore things up? And that has led now to a formal start of an implementation called an MTSS Framework, which stands for Multi-Tiered Systems of Support. And what I wanna share with you tonight, when we educate students, it's not just academics. It's in these three domains that you see up here in the infographic, it's socio-emotional, it's behavioral health and attendance, and the academics. And we're getting clear about what we mean by those three areas. And just to give you just a, just a quick snapshot of what do we mean by these things, we think of socio-emotional learning. This is about helping kids manage their emotions, it's about building friendships, relationships with each other. The academic strand, we're, that's, you know, as a school system, we're strong in that. We know how to do that piece. But we need the socio-emotional piece, and we already do a lot of character education work in our schools, and we, we have that down pretty pat. The third strand is what is called behavioral health and attendance. So in this area, we really look at students' habits, their choices, and then how those actions can manifest itself in good ways and in challenging ways. And, and that piece is another very important area that we need to focus on. So you put together socio-emotional health, the behavior with attendance, and we throw the attendance into the behavior domain simply because we really feel that is the best place to address any kind of attendance issues, and then the academics. And we really focus on those three. And then the structure that we use is what is called a tiered system. There's tier one, tier two, tier three. And when you think about tier one, you're thinking about things that can happen in the classroom, things that are happening in general to support our students. When we realize things are maybe not going exactly the way they should for a child, then we're developing a process, this here formal process, to move into what we call tier two. then we're, we're developing a process this year, a formal process, to move into what we call tier two. And tier two would be some type of small group setting where they're going to get some type of intervention in one of those three domains. If we still are having struggling or we're still not getting the progress we want, then we move into a tier three. And tier three would be your more individual support. Now, the reason why we continue to work with the University of Minnesota, why we're in this implementation, is that we're really good at tier one. We're pretty good at tier two. And when you think about tier three, that's where the work is. Because that's can be intensive, one-on-one support. We got to figure out the right programs. We need to figure out formal ways of moving students between these different levels of support. So I wanted to come tonight and share with you that. That is the work that we're doing right now. And then to be very intentional about the specific goals we have around this MTSS framework implementation. This year, we're focusing on establishing our different teams. There's building teams and there's a district leadership team. For district direction, the, the second section, we're developing a district process guide that becomes our RUT on the many facets of this framework. And then January 23rd, we're going to have our first formal district-wide training. First, with not only our licensed staff, but our academic paraprofessionals. So we all understand what this framework is. And then we'll do breakout sessions with very specific training for the different building sites. And we're on our way. And we are, you know, the heavy lifting is at the beginning, but it's, it's getting traction. We're getting movement on all these different areas. And really excited about the outcomes.
Is that a school day, the 23rd?
It's a workshop day.
Workshop day.
It's a workshop day. Yeah. Yeah. So the University of Minnesota will be helping with that, that training. And, and here's the thing, we've been doing a lot of this work for the past 10 years in our buildings. This is not new. What we're focusing on is getting it organized and getting it aligned. So that's just a quick update on that, on that piece here. The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight, I've shared this with you in the past. We have something called the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. It's by state statute. When you have 10 or more kids that are identified as American Indian, by statute, we have performance committee. We're in our third year. And we started during the pandemic on Zoom and now we meet in person. And it's just been a terrific group. Perry Static, a parent, is the chair. Leslie Chase, a special ed teacher at Shirley Hills, is the vice chair. And we now have 28 identified American Indian students in our district. And this is a quick breakout there. And the whole mission of this committee is to support these students, help them become aware of their cultural heritage, their background, provide supports in any way that we can, which could just simply be being aware of your background to academic supports, to support with applying for colleges, whatever it might be that the committee has tasked for that. New this year, when our population is more than 20, there's an automatic grant that kicks in for all school systems. It's a $20,000 minimum grant. West Taka, West Taka's allocation is $22,506. It's kind of like a Title I grant where you write the grant, you get approved, and then as you expend dollars, you get reimbursed. So the two things that we're working on currently with this grant is that we're funding a part-time American Indian liaison. That's Leslie Chase. So by just a timesheet outside of her working day, she is connecting with elementary American Indian students and also with high school American Indian students. And basically, she's just building relationships. There's not, there's not like big issues going on. It's more the little kids. It's just, hey, let's meet after school and we're going to do some fun crafts and some activities. So kids can get to know each other that they may not be aware we have a similar background. High school, it's more about getting ready for college. It's about what's your next step? Where do you need help? So she's been a great asset that way. And then with this funding, we started a partnership with McGissi. McGissi is an organization that works with secondary schools. And they're coming into Grandview. It's, it's a volunteer basis. We've invited our 7A American Indian students at Grandview to say, hey, once a week, someone from McGissi is coming and we're going to be talking about anything about American Indian background, history, activities, crafts, that type of thing to build community with those kids. So that'll go through mid-January. So without this funding, it'd be really hard to do some of these things and, and more to come. So it's been a great group to work with. Parents have been very appreciative. And again, the goal is to make a positive impact on this particular population. And then we take this required Minnesota statute and then we're going to do something with it and do it well.
Will you let me know when the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You've been to some of those in basketball. Last thing, just a very quick update. You know, the, the bread and butter of teaching and learning is the curriculum review cycle. And every year, we have a cycle. We have a calendar, a work that I do with different disciplines. Going into year one this year is our media specialist and world language groups. And again, that first year, we're identifying strengths and gaps, looking at research and the needs of our students. In year two, I'm working with art and music and FIED. We're implementing new academic standards. And I know some people look at that as the 2017, the 2018 standards. Yeah. They got put on the shelf by the state. The whole implementation process got delayed, you know, with the pandemic. But they are working on implementing these new academic standards, updating work card, updating pacing charts. And then in year three, you've heard me talk about the K4 language arts adoption. So we're right in the middle of that and that's going very well. And then the high school English department, there are new, what are called the 2020 academic standards in English language arts. And they're working on your requirements, your requirements in writing. And there's a whole new section of benchmarks around Native American literature. So they're doing study and research as to what would that be for our English classes at the high school to bring in new literature that's by Native American authors. So that's just a quick snapshot on the work that we're doing in those four different areas. So it's our report.
Finance report.
Good evening, everyone. I just like to say Merry Christmas with this snow on the road.
Come on, happy Thanksgiving first.
All right, that's right, that's right. I'm here tonight to give you my monthly financial report on enrollment and the finances through the end of October. We'll start off with enrollment. On the far left-hand side are the two primary combined enrollments. The blue column is October 1st. The orange is as of November 1st, that we've completed our first two full months of school. We have 930 students at the primary schools, early childhood through grade four. Grades five through seven is holding strong at 533 students at Grandview. And our high school has 948 students. And the far right-hand column is our combined district enrollment. This month is 2,411. We have a slight change in our elementary and high school, which is not terribly unusual for this time of the year when students are settling into their choices and some movement. The nice thing that we're really pleased about is when we set our adopted budget, we planned on 2,408 students. So we are at that point or, or better. And so not only these previous two months, but the next two months, we'll continue to monitor very closely. And then we will take that information. And if we do need to revise our, our student counts with our, in our revised budget, we will do so. So again, we've had a lot of focus on enrollment and, and watched that very closely. Financial, through the end of October, we've received 7.2 million or 28, or 28.8% of our budget. And we've expended 9.2 million or 27% of our budget. And again, happy to report that that seems to be holding true with our revised budget. A slight fluctuation just because our prior two years had the federal cares COVID funds. We do have a small amount of carryover this year, but for the most part, most of that was in the prior two school years. So again, we are gearing up for the revised budget. But as far as our adopted budget, we're really pleased with how this school year has started off.
So that 27% is just mainly because of the extra funding the last two years?
Right.
At a higher percentage?
Right, yeah. And we didn't have some activities, we weren't session. So there is a lot of fluctuation between those years, but the number, we're comfortable with where that's at, yes. Few other items. Again, I mentioned that the revised budget is underway now that the audit's done. And we will be presenting that in February. And last Thursday, our, our finance committee met and we did a real deep dive on enrollment and again, studying that for future planning. And we do have another meeting in, or December 1st. And the primary focus will be to really take a, a hard look at our truth and taxation hearing presentation, which will be at the December meeting. Our roadmap is our budget calendar, so we'll look at that. And again, the main focus will be our levy. And I think that's all I have this evening. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, just Scott talked about several of the action items. One thing to draw your attention to in the, the agenda is that you'll be approving the 23-24 district calendar. We have the opportunity to run that. First of all, we start with the Shell calendar, which really outlines long in advance what your longer breaks are. And so we really, when we get to the 23-24, we're putting in professional development days. Our teaching and learning committee works through that. We bring it up to our joint parent advisory committee. And we have that calendar in place. And then we really look at a Shell calendar, which are going out then to the 26-27 school year of when some of those longer breaks are and when school starts and stops. And I think staff families appreciate just knowing some of those dates in advance so they can plan for things that they're interested in. We, I think most of the other items are pretty self-explanatory. That's in it. Our facilities committee continues to talk about maintenance, about security items, education redesign. We talk about activity space primarily with our outdoor spaces. We've been in the process with our staff doing different focus groups. And so we pulled, a lot of this work really concentrates around the high school. And so they had a few more meetings, but there's a little bit of it that connects with primary staff, middle school staff. Some of it is with some of our maintenance needs, security needs. And so we've toured around the different buildings and we'll continue to update through the facilities committee. But I would, I look to have another update for parents and staff here in the next month about how the progress that we're making in these focus groups. And then we, what we really hope to do is get some estimates on what projects look to cost. Again, our operating maintenance dollars does not provide the funding for us to do these style projects. You would be, you'd need to go forward with a voter-approved bond. That's how schools are funded. And so what we're, we're doing is trying to get those estimates put together. I think a lot of people are familiar with some of the inflationary stories that are out there. And we're just trying to make sure that we do an accurate job of projecting out several years of what these things could cost so that we can bring that to the facilities committee so they can start getting their minds around what some of these improvements consist of and then what they would cost. I see this really leading to a community presentation this spring where we would be inviting parents, staff, community members to be able to listen to what our plans would have. That would give us another opportunity to get feedback. Currently, we've done a demographic study. We've done a community survey along these lines, which have been supportive of the direction that we're taking. Just want to make sure that we stay connected and represent everyone well. And so next, next facilities meeting, we'll further this conversation. You see one action, or not action item, well, it is an action item that we'd be going into closed today. This is a discussion around real estate property that we, at the end of this meeting, will be recommending to the board to go in closed session so we can have some discussions about the acquisition of real estate.
Thanks, Kevin. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carries? Move on to discussion item. Chair moves for approval of action item 7A, approval of the American Education Week. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item 7B, approval of the first reading of policy 2400. And that has to do with chemical use and use, so.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Chair moves for approval of action item 7C, approval of adding a recreation and activity center program support specialist. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Chair moves for approval of action item 7D, approval of the elimination of one adventure club site supervisor position, which we talked about. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Chair moves for approval of action item 7E, approval of an additional compensation for a venture club site supervisor preschool early learning center position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? And then the chair moves for approval of, of the tables to be sold at K bid auction.
I think there's some extra tables.
So last spring, we ordered new tables for Grandview Middle School. They've now come in. And we're just going to see if we can get some value out of the existing tables. They're being replaced because the mechanics of them, setting them up, setting them down uneven, but also the hardware and some of the tables themselves are just not in good, good condition. But they might have some value for somebody. And so that would be our best way of disposing of them.
I pinched my fingers a few times on those tables. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carries? All right. All right. The open meeting law, Minnesota statute, section 13D, point 05, subdivision 3C, allows for the school board to close a meeting for the following purpose, among others, to develop offers for the purchase of real estate. The board will be considering the possible development of an offer to purchase property located at 5910 Game Farm Road East in Minutristo. The chair moves to close the meeting for this purpose. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in closed session and we will keep down to the other committees to come before the board. If not, chair moves for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?